That Zoom link is published. And now we've got an echo. Are we good, Madam Clerk? Yes, we are. All right. Then without further ado, could you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Slotin.
Here.
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Claffey.
Here.
And Mayor Perdott.
Here. Chief Hobbs, would you mind leaving it, leading us in the pledge?
I believe through the United States of America and through the Republican Party stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
If you would, I'd just like to have a moment to congratulate the city for a successful Tuesday night, National Night Out. The chief was briefing me a little bit. I think we had how many chief? Four hundred arrived? At least that's how many hot dogs and hamburgers we went through. I'd like to thank the chief for having those. It's great to see everybody come out and utilize our parks. I hope everybody's careful this summer. And of course, this weekend coming up, we do have a heat warning. So I hope you're all safe. And with that, let's begin the meeting. Madam, our city manager, Flora, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Kramer, a second by Councilmember Slotin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or nay if opposed. Thank you very much. Moving on to presentations, we're happy to receive and welcome our Lake County Tourism District annual report. Sir, if you wouldn't mind coming up and introducing yourself.
In my area, the executive director of the Tourism Lake River district, doing business at visit Lake County CA. And I want to thank council members for what we gave you. Melissa, thanks for sending it out. And for Lake staff, thanks for having us here. We're going to do a pretty good overview of 2020 for us. And let me pull this out and walk with it because it's easy for me to see. So this is a, and here's the creation. Thank you for 2022. We do this every year. It's part of our bylaws and we're going to look at board members. How it changed their time since we've not assigned whoever we're sitting right here. We're going to look at economic impact of tourism from some data from Visit California. We're also going to look at our marketing program review, an overview. What if, how do we judge our success? And we're going to also look at the district renewals, something that was near and dear to all of our hearts this past year. With all the thought for that, here is our flippers to get. I will take you through, but I'll kind of introduce you to a couple of new board members. We've got Alfredo, who is the CEO or the general manager and the CFO of the Robinson Ranch area. We're excited to have him on. Where we had kind of a, another gentleman in his seat who didn't do it, who wasn't very present. So Alfredo is a very good board member. Happy about that. Susan Parker, I don't think this last time around was on our board. It was Jessica Piska at the time. We got last steps of Susan's on the board as well. So most of the board is state for state and they do a lot of work. They show up, we have a board, we get things done. So how do we measure our marketing success? We look at our website traffic in the destination marketing world. We also look at social media growth, engagement. What are they doing with it? We look at campaign impressions, performance. This is the paid media that we buy. We also look at our email data. How it's growing and how it's evolving. We look at our marketing partnerships. We have several marketing partnerships. And we look at public relations, something that everybody needs to do and be kind of skimmed by. So let us the balance of the revenue for 2022. It was down 24% when we said 21. Kind of a brutal number when we started to do this. We had 463,000 dollars in revenue in 2021. Obviously, if that kind of phenomena, there are a lot of people up here, no place for us to go. People got the car, they drove. They need a great destination. Twenty twenty two, we will develop reality support. And there's also some other issues in there that we can talk about and define. Here it is by district. So we have two contracts. The Lake County T S D was down almost a hundred thousand dollars between 21 and 22. And part of that is we, 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 one of our books out of cash basis, part of that was just the way that we received funds from the county. It was really slow under our last tax collector and it's pretty big. Those funds, we didn't get a quarter. It ended in September of 2020, in 2020 until February of 2021. So it puts it into a whole other year for us. But as you can see, it doesn't make budgeting very easy when you're out there trying to do media spending and such. The T R T was down a little bit. There was all sorts of different payments there. Clear Lake was down about, I guess that's about four or eight thousand dollars. Lakeport was down a couple hundred bucks or a couple thousand. And Twin Mike Casino and our two contracts, Robinson, were up pretty significantly. We had some good partnerships with those guys and we're going to keep working those the best we can. So economic impact of tourism in Lake County, these are numbers from the running initiative, which is a research firm that Visit California employs. And they take a look at, if they look at daytime trips, overnight trips in San Antonio, they use geographic data. They basically come up with these numbers. A little workout out there, but the whole idea of it is, is you can see, we really have recovered from the pre-pandemic highs that we were at in 2019. They look at travel related spending, which is everything that people spend when they travel. For every, you know, for every person spending in a hotel, they're going to spend three dollars outside of that hotel stay. So we're in the restaurants, we're going to rent, we're going to buy gas in the lake, they're going to go out on the boat. They're going to do all sorts of stuff. So that economic impact is a hundred and seventy five million dollars for the county of Lake. And here's about thirteen million tax revenue, both local and state. And it employs about eighteen hundred people. Tourism or hospitality in the state of California employs over a million people. In our counties, just a little over, over, over a thousand. So one of those other metrics that we use in destination marketing is our website traffic. It's kind of a holy grail. It's what we have. It's the way people, the way people look to figure out where they're going to go, what they want to do. Our website traffic in 2022 was up twelve percent, four hundred sixty four thousand page views, which is great considering our budget for now. We had a lot of new users up eleven percent and sessions were up again eight point seven percent. So some good numbers. What do people look at? They're kind of from the major cities. They're looking at places that we want to reach. And they're looking for, for a lot of stuff that, you know, would be very common up here. Cabinets, accommodations, they go to our homepage, they look at our events, outdoor recreation, then a little whole harbor hotspot. If you Google Harbor in Lake County, you get our website about five times before you're going to get Harbor hotspot's website. So we get a lot of graphic in there. They, they backlink to us. Their website has on their homepage, link to our website. So it's, it's a mutual reciprocity. You get it back and forth. But I always think that's interesting about how they are, that whenever I go up there, they always tell me, you know. Really, you know, okay, that's great. But harbor hotspot. So that's, that's how we look at our website traffic. Organic social media is kind of like secret sauce for us. Oh, that's going to be. Yeah. So there's a slide here, a couple of them. We did some market research, like agency did media giant, did a little look at some of the data about who is visiting Lake County. And we actually bumped up Sacramento, excuse me, Santa Rosa, K L higher, and the deserts go for the first time. So, and Uba City. So those are areas that we, we put a little bit more in our search and our social, our paid search and social accounts. So yeah, Minnesota. Organic social media. Organic social media, like I said, is pretty much our secret sauce. It is, we do it really well and I don't do it. I just oversee the woman who does it, but she does a really good job. She can not only shoot photography, she can also rightfully do posts. She knows how to get it organically out there. We get a lot of shares of our stuff. We pushed hard on paid social media to have people follow us in 2021. And in 2022, we pushed hard to grow our Instagram followers. And that's why the number there increased like thirty two percent. So those are great. The numbers, the cities are the same, you know, exact cities, but we got stopped with no Vanessa. In the paid social or in the organic social. But organic social is really a very bright start for us. It's, it's great to have. Paid search. This is the stuff that we made Google. And last year, we even tried a little bit of paid search on Bing, which was a total disaster. Bing, it is just, I don't know, but we, we were seeing it come in organically and we thought, okay, well, maybe there's a lot of people that still are searching on Bing. And so we threw a couple thousand against it. Intuitively, it was a disaster. It was like, stop, stop within like three or four days. It just didn't really work. But our paid impressions were pretty much down across the board. Well, you know, you spend less than paid search, you're going to get less than paid search. It just is, it's a pay to play kind of game. But our top performing keywords are cabins in California, vacations in California, vacation cabins in California. The word clearly. And then we buy ad performing groups as well. And none of it's really too shocking. But we pay close attention. We buy hundreds of hundreds of keywords. We really try to refine down. We're much of the ones that are driving the most traffic for us with the most clicks. Our click through is, you know, fairly chunky at seven point four three. That's, that's a pretty good CCR on paid search. So those are also some of the numbers that we look at. Paid search delivers the most traffic for our website. Most traffic comes from paid search. Programmatic display, these are ads that we ran. They, they, they're, they're, they're not videos, but we try to like make it look like videos with the still advertising, kind of like the Ken Burns effect. About one point seven million impressions, sixteen hundred clicks and nine hundred sixty four conversions. So just a lot of numbers going at it, but we try to do as, you know, as much as, as little as we have. Video performance is also, we only buy over the top TV and connected TVs. So we don't buy any of your linear programming. We're not on the Chinese game. We're not in any of those places. We couldn't ever afford that. But we buy YouTube, we buy pre-roll and, you know, again, it delivers a lot of impressions and, and people, you know, the completion rate is really good. People will watch our video before they shut it off. And we buy eights and fifteens. So it's really short stuff, over quick. We ventured for the first time into influencer marketing. Because part of influencer marketing is a entirely new category, a whole new, really silo of media that didn't exist, you know, just a few years ago. Now kind of the hottest thing going. It's a hard thing to figure out what to do because, you know, people's audiences can be so far off from your audience. We don't really need to reach people in New York City. So it's great. If you've got a lot of followers in New York City, those people are not coming here. We want people in our market area. So we worked with a company, a two couple, a one couple, really cool people that have said, oh, don't forget to move. The other thing that we did, and the agency negotiated this hard, is we wanted to own all our hard assets. We needed all the video and everything they shot every year. And when we took all of that stuff, which was about fifteen minutes of video, fifteen images. And we cut it all into our commercials. We used all of our, our paid advertising. It was great because it was the freshest stuff that we had. They did six social posts, two blogs and two blogs. And then I had a great experience. The year before that, we had California through my lens coming into the county during COVID. It was this crazy thing. He came with his wife and his two, I think they were like equally gold twins. And so, yeah, crazy visit. And long story short, I ran into a couple about a month ago. Young couple stayed at the state park at the brewery. And I said, how do you find Lake County? Because I always ask people, where do they find us? How do they give you, they're kind of, you know, a lost. And they said, well, you know, we help. We follow this guy on social media. His name is, and he's California through my lens. I was like, yeah. How about that? So people, people do follow a lot of these folks and they do learn a lot about where to go. So that was our first venture. And if we had more resources, I would do a lot more of this. I think this stuff is really powerful. And the way the agency negotiated the assets was huge. For us, it's about five grand and that's just almost enough. That's going to get a model there. So it, it was, it was really, really well worth it. Paid social on Facebook and Instagram. Again, you know, we were really pushing hard on paid social. So year-over-year increase was pretty huge. Eight percent increase in impressions. And, you know, it's good stuff. Oh. Buddy. So industry benchmarks, we kind of loop passive. Our stuff is compelling. It's fun. It's active. It's family. It's chill. It's, it's beautiful. It's warm. We're running in, you know, the big area. It's freezing. It's crowded. We have nice stuff to show people and, and they take interest in it. So paid social history of this break. So here's where we did some updated intelligence on the audience. And we kind of, we sussed out like some new markets to try to like look at and to maybe up against. And that's where Uba City came in. So Santa Rosa was really the biggest that showed up. I, I struggled with Santa Rosa. I don't know why. It just broke all with like Santa Rosa, but the numbers were like, you know, we got a lot of folks from Santa Rosa who've come here. So Santa Rosa, Sacramento, San Francisco, obviously the larger markets to be priorities. And then Uba City kind of popped in there. So audience intelligence. Our monthly blog, everybody in the board gave us heard me moan about our email. This is a lot of work. Email is something that takes a lot of resources. A lot of time, our contacts are about seventy three hundred in 2022. People must have doubled that since then, but that would be an extra screwboard. But we've, we've done a really good job with, with, with email marketing. I think our open rate is up there. It's thirty percent. However, do I read most people's emails? About twenty percent. And our click through rate is, is almost three times what an industry benchmark is. But it's a way for us to kind of get in, you know, into the market and really kind of cover around the lake. It's hard to cover everything. But we really try to sub out like, you know, what's new, what happened next month. We're going to see the blog post on a perfect, a perfect day in the river. So we've got that lined up and we had to make some tweaks, but this month we're going to, I think next Tuesday, we'll drop that email. And we'll have a perfect day in the lake. So. The monthly blog visitor map. We've all heard about the visitor map. We've actually redone it, but the visitor map was very successful. It got us out of county and it didn't really, it made us money. It has a little bit of money, but we did have to spend favorite stakeholder money on it. And it really covered the county and it got us out. The big mistake we made is we thought five thousand copies would be enough to have in county. And we were done with, we blew up to five thousand copies like by, it was like October. It was pretty painful. People, we didn't have any maps. So all of our county this time, we just printed maps and we got a ton of that. So you can pick them up at your chamber. You can pick them up at the chamber over in Lakeport and all of our stakeholders have a lot of them boxes up. So marketing partnerships, Northern Wardberry, that's our group that California basically puts us in a rural region. And ours is called the North Coast. We market ourselves under the Northern Wardberry banner. And that's humble. They just seem to know what they're learning. Great. You know, a lot in common. It's, they're like great in trust for me to go to when I have questions. And they're really, we do, in our marketing, it's deep in it. It's really good. It's, I like it. It's, it's, it's good stuff. And we, we do get a lot of traffic. It's in our top like 15 in terms of referring traffic to our website. So it's a, it's a good thing for us to be doing and it's pretty minimal out there. The other thing that they did is they got us into a travel adventure show, which was in San Francisco. And those things are really expensive. And the only way we could have been there is if we all parked together and went, and they paid twice as much to be there as we did. Which was really nice of them. They're really cool. They were, it's, it's like they, they took care of us. But we, and, and that produced, we've got about 600 emails, live emails out of it. We ran a sweepstakes on before the trade show. We gave two nights away at the Coleman Hotel, two nights away at the Little River Inn in Encino and on up the coast we went. And we were hopping it out in the street. We were hopping it in the high of the people were giving us the radio and jumping into this contest. And that's kind of what you want. You want a good day to base people who are interested in travel. And it's a Bay Area market for us. So it's great. Unfortunately, in 2023, they canceled the show. Kind of shows you what's happening in the hospitality. That was a huge show, shock. They canceled it, but yes, the numbers on it for the hostess, right? It just didn't work. So they gave us a kind of this lame hat to go to the show in Denver. And he said, no, you don't want to go to the show in Denver. And then he rolled all that show Denver got snowed in. Nothing better happened either. So I don't know if travel shows are going to get that. I, I was kind of a con- a con artist after going. I said, you say they're great, but it just didn't, it didn't, I guess, happen to them on the same thing. Another partnership we have, it's a, the T A D is the support to the tune every year of $5,000, the Tours of the Masters. They're like Tours of the Masters. Michelle Carson, this year won CTA of the year. They're a really bright group. They're really energetic. They're really encouraging. They do a lot of great stuff to really help us out when times get tough or when, when I need something. I just had a media person in town and I had to call a CTA's to do the dozen land tours of Knott's Atxai. I called Lisa down here in, in Philly, Canberra to do a two and a half hour kayak ride with, with the reporter Amber Dong. And, and then we have another dozen land tour of the Philly State Park. So, you know, it kind of gives me a basis of something that I follow. So we really like the program. It's a good program. Our book direct widget. So what is this? Kind of wonky? So you have a website and then, you know, we buy this widget that we bolt on to our website called Book Direct. One of my whole other company, they have their own backend, they have their own everything. It was our way of getting our stakeholders and people who were in the business of renting, you know, their rooms every night upfront and getting them high in priority in our advertising. We had only started it, it was the middle of 2022. Took us a while to kind of figure it out and we liked the tool. It's working really well for us. It delivered about 5,000 searches in 22. And that number is astronomical again. We're really, we're moving in. We've kind of focused our new campaigns on let's get everybody to look at all these properties. Paracels, the eight cool properties. We just, it's a really great way for us to, to get people interested in places to stay in, in Lake County. We also sent Trudy Wakefield to a very good media event in the Presidio in San Francisco. These shows are, again, this stuff is kind of pricey to go to, but we winged it. We put it together. Found some place for Trudy to stay really affordably. We got people to donate. It gets, they flew by. There are about 50 media people that were there, solid media people, and out of it came a really good story in Seven by Seven Magazine. Or website now, it's not much of a magazine, but it was, it was a positive story. And we still get people asking, you know, can we come to Lake County? If, where we can, we can make it happen. We do. It's expensive. We also attended Visit California, the Book Forum. And that is a really key forum for everybody. We, we go to these forums and we like try and say it as visible as we can. We want people to know that Lake County is in the business of destination marketing. We are open. And that's where we go and we just underscore that presence. We, we, they're great shows and we're going to continue to do that. The, the district renewal, the trendy district renewal. I say that because I had to run this thing and it was brutal. And you guys all know this because I came in here and I moaned when you accepted, but I just want to say, we renewed the district, which we did not know our district was going to expire in five years when we started this thing, but now we, now we know it was. And so the district is now completely going to renew. It's going to sunset. The old one, sunset goes away on the end of this year. And then January 24th, a new district starts with a new assessment at 2.5%. And it will be for 10 years. And I really think that that, you know, that's going to give us a little bit more traction. We've got three new properties opening, one, one legacy property, Knott's Atxai Harbor. We've got Octavia opening and we got Getaway opening right down here south of you guys. And we really need these places. I mean, we've been in this now for five years. We haven't seen these single hotels on. So this is, is good. We're seeing, I think this is a positive trend. And that's what I have for you today. And I'd love to answer any questions and.
Thank you very much. It was a very impressive presentation. Great, pretty kind of all the way down. Councilor, we're going to have a couple of questions for you.
With the lake being so low left field and now being forward, that, that's kind of how I thought about it.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I, I just talked, I was so impressed. I talked to Priya in, for like, excuse me, Priya in Lakeport yesterday or or meeting. And she had a record July. She contributes to the lake. She said she's just got a lot more people coming. She's all over docks sort of putting in her boats and on her ramp. So yes, the lake certainly helps. We had a whole lot of stuff off of our website and we had downplayed a lot of stuff for Z and there is all the programs.
Thank you, Councilor.
Yeah, I'll use a couple of questions. First one is, last thing you mentioned, you said that they'll be in.
What was the last? Getaway. Getaway is. Getaway has purchased 457 acres on Morgan Valley Road. Yeah, and it's. It is more rural than anything. It's a whole higher price point. And it doesn't really focus on kind of the community aspect. I believe it focuses on people truly getting away. There's no common area for people to attend there. It's you go and you stay in one of their properties and you're kind of there. And they're very successful as well. They've got like a great track record. This will be their 20th. Over there, they're really excited about it. They put a lot of money into it. You can see in the plans. They're gorgeous. They're, they're cool.
I saw the plans because I'm. Unfortunate, but thank. That wasn't, I honestly, it's, it's, yeah. Positively, it's a, it's. I hope it has worked out well.
Yeah, I have friends who've stayed in other, other states and they just rave about the experience. They say, look, really out there.
Like when four mans and Toby, he.
It sounds like a boring space.
Saying that's in the plan.
And it has air conditioning, has air conditioning.
Yeah.
It's only 365 percent. Tokyo is just a couple months.
Free well, one way in. Anyhow, that was it. What I would want to find it. What are the, let's say the one, two, three things that people are looking for? Fishing first or wine tours first? What, what's the order?
You know, we, we kind of look at it in terms of our priority, in terms of our, our, basically our major pillars that we market to. One of them is lake and it's recreational lake, whether it's, you know, it's just enjoy the lake recreationally or fishing, obviously really big. I've talked to fishermen that really, you know, everything that fishermen. And they say that everybody, they're like, oh, rubbish number four, crazy. So the fishing is, you don't need a lot of fishing because they say that, that's not working. Although Bass Messers, I know doing a story right now or working with lots of stuff, but. So fishing, wine tasting is another thing that we really know brings people in to the county. And then really it's like our clear skies, our rural getaway. It's just a place to go get away and be with your family and hang out and not worry about the kids playing outside all the time. A lot of people, you know, down in the Bay Area live in just pretty crowded. They don't really get that kind of experience. So they come up here for that. So we always talk about like our open spaces, our, you know, our, our festivals, our things you can get out and do, our beautiful sky, our clean air. And.
Engine hiking, biking.
You know, well, that's hiking is part of that and biking are all in those, but we don't have like a, we don't have a hiking or a biking like pillar that we talk about. Burry, people say when she will bury, that's, that's a, that's a pop one too. It's a great one. Great audiences of those vendors. Yeah. We just have to pick and choose what we can, what we can set aside.
Yep. Thank you.
First, mayor, talking to them.
So we, we're, we're just projects coming online. Alwol, did you see? And, and we had new combinations here? Well, I mean, depends on what you call it, new combinations. So really in, in terms of like brick and mortar hotels, nothing has been built since I've been in this job in the last quarter years, quarter and a half years. There hasn't been a single property that's, you know, been developed and opened. However, in the short-term rental space, we know a lot of these songs started COVID, got sold, a lot of lake homes, a lot of beautiful homes. And they are short-term rentals. And we all know we have, you know, compliance issues.
With, with some of those brick and mortars, how is home porting for an organization that wants to see new hotels?
Huge, huge, huge. I mean, that just shows in the lifeline. I mean, that's, that's it. I mean, that is, that is the future. It's. I mean, I watched during COVID and say, open all those properties in Utah. Painful. Great for them. Go Travis. But yes, it's hard because you don't, we have a lot of new products for people to use. You know, a lot of old outdated product. Instead of new, we get product, the more we're going to bring people. We got the goods. We just need really good people to stay.
Last question we.
Oh, sorry. I, I just want to say, I know all this is fun. A lot of hard work comes into this. And it is, when things are through break and take photos of those kayaking, you don't get to do a lot of that. You do a lot of the grind behind this thing and you're doing amazing.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
I want to add, what did you say? My next question for you is VRBO traffic. It seems like we're getting more and more homeowners, more vacationer, maybe homeowners that are turning to the RV O1. Are you seeing any of that in the trends or are you checking that?
We do. It's a hard one to watch, but we, we watch the numbers. I mean, Airbnb releases their data by county every year. And the number in Lake County, they, they, they reported last year, 12 million revenue. I mean, that would far surpass probably any of our brick and mortar properties. So it's a really, it's a, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough one. Our.
It seems like a niche business.
Well, I am completely, our ordinance for transmit occupancy tax doesn't mention the word short-term rental. It says hotel, motel and B and B. So why would you, you know, and I don't like it. I'm 10 and a half percent higher than everybody else. That's stuff there. So I moan, like, you know, we were getting anywhere with the last tax collector. That was not going to happen. You know about that. We got a new guy, Patrick is there. And so that's one of the goals is to really work with Patrick. Say, hey, let's, let's figure this out. Here's a new ordinance. Have you, I've wrote a new ordinance. It's ready. It's shelf ready.
Thank you for that because I think that would really help. I, I hope people that are watching, people that are here and present understand just what that TOD can do for both the air stations, but also the revenue coming in from our dollar and our sales tax helps us to renew our roads. It's a real part to do the thing.
It's very important.
Tourism is huge. Thank you very much. If I see any other questions.
So how do you keep track of the Airbnb's or not paying? And are there, are there already tracking at all?
Oh, I had like sneaky ways. It's not really very applicable. There's like, there's Airbnb, excuse me, there's Air DNA, no, DNA. Air DNA, which is, you know, a website that got concocted by people who don't work for Airbnb to try to say what's happening in the marketplace. But I find the data from Lake County to be skewed way out of what I think is realistic. We were, we're working with our friends and it's been really frustrating. We're working with our friends. That's Book Direct and David does this analysis. And they've got a, they want, there's a, there's a widget. And they, we can expand our search to include every short-term rental in Lake County. But it's a dangerous thing because for starters, it, it has to work off of some crazy ordinances, which pulled in like Clover deal. Because it's going to work off a latitude and longitude, so it will work. And the second problem is, is the entire time the product's been in testing, it delivers error messages. And that's the thing I have that on my site. You can't, but when I go in there, I go in there, I look, there's over three hundred short-term rentals in Lake County. And I can tell you how many people we have paying TOD and it's about 110. So we know there's a lot of this.
Maybe what people need to understand is that's being charged. It is. Maybe, maybe we need to do some kind of a marketing on that for our, for, for our people here. And a lot of, no, they're not having. So I think maybe that's a lot because they're like, oh, I don't want to pay that. So I'm not going to register. But if they knew that they weren't paying, maybe we would be more. But maybe there's some understanding. People who are just getting into the business, that this is like kind of the new market or.
It's a piece in the horse, Governor.
Yeah. And, and so maybe if we find these people that are doing that, they can say, get right on them, send them a letter saying, hey, no, they're scared, they're tired. And you don't have to pay. It's fine. You're not going to pay, but you know.
And you don't have any money, you know. So it's easier to do. But I will tell you, like, my listing gets dumped to the bottom of searches because I'm charging. And they know exactly. They control their platform. It's proprietary. They don't even hook me anywhere up there. Because I'm 10 and a half percent higher. They want to show the cheapest room rate and they count it. It's just so bleak. But.
But I, I asked for, for the vision.
Thank you, everybody.
And for your work, you can hear the words and everything on your profile and move forward.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Fishery, very interesting one. Everybody know that. It was.
You got anybody going to distribution for that?
Related to the Israel, find, find focus on that appropriate area. Didn't, doesn't have an ordinance related to this. Yes. So what he uses, look, didn't crack, change the platform. We are collecting, getting this as we.
Yeah, I know you are. And I'm seeing a lot that aren't being. And it does serve up for everyone. Nice, thanks, guys. Thank you, David. Yep. All right. Moving on to item F of the comment. The fact of people to address city council on items that are not on the agenda. Be aware that city council members themselves cannot act on or respond to your questions as a grounds act is not allowed to do that. However, if you're in someone who might be able to answer your question, the staff available room, you may directly contact that member who could help you either after the meeting or at break. So with that, I do have a request from Margaret Meek, the, in Mar-a-Ride. And she would like to speak to us about question shared with the planning department. Good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. Little bit about myself. Before 2017, I was completing my certification as an elementary school. I went to return to elementary, so the third elementary, I've completed my intern year. When my home court was like. When I bought my property in 2012, a 3855 Monterey Drive was on an incorporated part of Maryland. I'm Lily.
Ms. May, can you speak directly into the microphone, please, or pull it down? Thank you.
Why I'm here is I received an email from Southern California that after two and a half years working with, with this organization helping with urban development, we received a grant to help me rebuild my home. I was suddenly in a. The reason stated for I get six months to apply to square profit law. If I cast the new charter. I'm questioning this decision. Now I realize if the topic is not on the agenda. But this better on the agenda, I don't know, for directing people that I need to get forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mimi. I'm sorry that we had to call it IU. I didn't see any other requests for public input. But if there's anyone considering the room raising their hand, welcome to come up and speak. Is what this? As well as.
Didn't allow that thing.
When you fill it out, um.
I did.
You can give that to me. Um.
It's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Because this doesn't seem like it's working.
It's working.
We can work here with this.
Well, can everybody else? Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
I'll try to talk loud. Uh, I'm Kay Littlepess, uh, and this is regarding the, um, animal shelter in Clear Lake. Your July twentieth city council meeting had audio issues where the speaker could not be heard clearly. So what I was trying to get across was you have an organization, North Bay Animal Services, that is under contract with the city of Clear Lake that refuses to take in Clear Lake stray dogs due to lack of kennel space. And yet, the same organization went to a shelter a hundred plus miles away to Stockton to rescue twenty dogs and thirty cats, which were then taken to their petaluma shelter. Meanwhile, their shelter in Clear Lake was and is extremely overcrowded, turning dogs away to be hit by cars or left to starve. Why, when the petaluma shelter had kennel space, did they not take in the Clear Lake dogs who were given no relief and continue to be housed in a hot warehouse in spite of being told by the city manager to remove the dogs from the warehouse last April? Were there no other rescues between Petaluma and Stockton that could have assisted in this rescue so that Clear Lake, which this organization is under contract, could be given some relief? But to add insult to injury, there's the PR write-up with North Bay patting themselves on the back with, and I quote, "At the break of dawn, we sprung into action. Without a moment's hesitation, we pledged our support and assistance like a cast of superheroes." That was their wording and outline. Why couldn't they have sprung into action like a cast of superheroes for their dogs in Clear Lake who continue to be turned away for lack of kennel space? Recently, I was made aware of an injured dog where the reporting party was told it can't be taken in. So let me, me remind you that five nine seven F of the penal code states all injured animals are to be taken to the vet. It is the duty of all officers, whether animal control or police. You must take that animal to the vet. There are no excuses. So without a moment's hesitation, like a cast of superheroes, get that dog or cat to the vet. And can I get an update on the horse? Did he survive? The horse that they rescued? Does anybody?
I don't know. Good answer, really.
Okay. All right. Well, see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the council for a public comment at this time? Madam clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Very well, and moving on to item G for consent agenda. Anyone have, uh, an item they would like to have discussed this early on?
I have a question from item number seven. It's the plan, or the plan.
So let's pull item seven off the consent agenda. Any other changes? Anyone from, uh, here in the room that would like to have another item pulled from the consent agenda? Anyone on Zoom, madam clerk?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom.
Thank you very much. The exception of item seven. Motion by Councilmember Kramer, second by Councilmember Fluton. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Both, opposed, very well, it passes unanimously. Mr. Flora. Open up with item seven. Notification of inspiring committee members. Go ahead, Councilwoman Fluton. The, uh, the five names that are on the playlist.
Well, two of the names. Not sure what I know of that, but. The record. Place the last two. Of that, uh, would happen different. I mean, I don't think you're actually, you're.
Very much. I have a motion to accept the, as far as clarified. Got it. Never. A motion by Councilmember Sluton, and second by Councilmember Kramer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Madam clerk, has any demands? All right, moving on to business, item H. Discussion and consideration of support for affordable housing projects by Chelsea Investment Corporation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so council is well aware of both affordable housing project. When they need that. In a bit of a puzzle to help them get the financing necessary to begin construction. This was one of the properties swallowed. And they don't. They don't land. He is like the Chelsea investment. Thank you. There are some more, uh, questions if you'd like, but I believe a large part of the challenge of this project, well, they've been increasing the tax credit finance. Project. Um, but the irony of the structure being state-owned land that's hammered scoring this project grew. Have been a, some. And so anyway, uh, you know, we've been working with our state representatives. They have made some changes. Some of the funding programs, expecting this year's application to be more competitive. Council approved a resolution last year, actually two revisions on it. Same program. Division. Um, but, so there was, there was a change. There's actually two resolutions that were part of, of the action that grabbed three thirty-five.
Which you should have a hard copy. It is, um, uploaded in the portal as well now. Um, but this is related.
Gives you grand application, um, the structure will be different when you actually do that. And. Pass you some of the, uh, CG. On the project. So let's just kind of have a little overview, granted, there's a question you have, and there's some, and then Chelsea here might be able to talk a little bit more. They're asking for ten more.
Any questions for you, any questions for council?
I think it's going to be like a thousand, we have five more.
Make sure you're speaking into the mic, sorry, I'm carrying. Any other questions? Like to open it up for the public, any public comment on this project? Any questions or comments in Zoom?
There is a hand raised on the Zoom.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Let's see, we have Lorenzo Alvarez and Teresa Pacalski.
Hi, my name is Teresa. Oh, sorry, there's a little background. Uh, my name is Teresa Pacalski. I'm a development associate at Chelsea Investment Corporation. Um, Lorenzo Alvarez and I are here to answer any questions if you have any, um, regarding the project or the funds we're requesting from HCD. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being present during this item. And we'll direct any questions to you. Any other questions from the public?
Is, is, are both of those folks together, Madam Clerk? With Chelsea?
I believe so, yes.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Is there anything you wanted to say, Lorenzo, or?
Uh, no, I just would like to, you know, second what Teresa said. I would also like to thank Alan and his team for all the back and forth for the past few weeks, working towards this financing. Uh, due date for the application on August fourteenth. So I just want to give a hats off and a kudos. I really appreciate the support.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comment, I will close that for public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and action. Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, I just have a question since this is more competitive. What's going to happen to this project if they don't happen to get it? It just doesn't go forward? Or is there something else we're looking at helping them?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of money out there. Uh, we have went and helped them, um, you know, look at a number of different funding programs. Um, you know, there's reasons why this is more attractive. I mean, I think I don't want to speak for Chelsea, but, um, you know, I believe that they're committed to this project and, you know, if they weren't successful here. Um, we look at other funding sources, but, you know, we have worked closely, in particular with Senator McGuire's office, in, um, influencing some changes to the rules this year. Um, and, uh, one of the, one of the challenges with what they call the excess sites with these state-owned properties. Um, they have worked in some additional points, so the excess sites properties score a little bit higher. Um, and that type of thing, so, um, I don't know what to say other than.
So if this doesn't go through, we're going to continue helping them with other things if we, if we can.
And I don't know, Lorenzo or Teresa, if there's anything you want to add.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. Um, it was that, uh, Joyce?
Yes.
Nice to meet you. Councilman Overton, nice to meet you. Um, yeah, so we have a number of funding sources that we are looking at beyond LGMG. Um, the next step would be the State Home Fund, which is scheduled to come out in mid to late September and follow that path, uh, with a final hope that we would go in for round one, nine percent tax credit next year to finalize and then, you know, start the closing and construction. But that's if we get LGMG and we get State Home and we get the nine percent. So all the ducks have to be in a row for that to happen. But we, with this first duck, we actually really believe we're competitive for LGMG more so than we were last year. Um, so we're, we're really looking forward to.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. I, I did want to, uh, just for clarity, we're talking about a property that exists or will exist on the eighteenth Avenue above, uh, clear, uh, Adventist Health Clear Lake Hospital. Um, do you have an idea yet how many units, uh, are proposed in the project?
Yes, I do. So we have a proposed eighty units. And of those eighty units, one would be a manager unit. Um, I can go over the high level of the project if you guys would like to hear more. So we're looking at a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. All ranging from thirty percent to sixty percent AMI, uh, arranged on a four-two-story building design right now. Now, the designs are pretty early, so, you know, I don't want to get nailed down to that, but we are looking at two-story, four-two-story buildings with that mix on a hundred and forty-six parking spaces. As well as a fifth building would be solely dedicated to community. So there'd be a community room, there'd be laundry room, uh, community kitchen, community, uh, computer room, uh, leasing office, as well as an outdoor taught lot for the families who live there, and a potential for some type of a sporting court. So we're not exactly sure what type. Currently, the plans show a half-court basketball court, but we're not married to that idea. If, let's say, the community for something else, we could, we can hear and get some feedback on that as well.
And I appreciate that, like, transparency, and I think it's important for people to understand what the project's scope is. And because we have such a need for housing in our community, particularly after the big fires, uh, that, you know, took place years ago. Um, we still haven't recovered from that. So thank you for that, um, overview. There being no, uh, other questions, I'll give, bring it back to council for action. Oh, we're going to do this in two, two different votes? Right? We can do it in one. Just reading both resolutions at once then, or?
You, you don't need to, you don't need to read them. You can just adopt a resolution by the number.
Mister, uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two resolutions, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five and twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six.
One second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer, and a second by Councilmember Overton. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item nine, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, authorizing sale or disposal of any surplus city property. Uh, Mr. Flora.
Director Labell will give a brief introduction to sign him.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The city has an older grader at the old public works yard. This grader is old, outdated, and non-compliant, is no longer able to be used. We bought a new one back, I believe, in twenty seventeen, and in our transition from the old public works yard to the new one, we began to sort and dispose of things that were no longer able to be used, with the grader being one of those. And since it is over ten thousand dollars, we need to bring it to council to be able to surplus it at an auction. Um, staff recommends that the council move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus city property.
Thank you, Madam Director. Any questions on this item? Like to open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address council on this item, please step forward. Seeing none even in the Zoom, Madam Clerk.
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to council.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus city property.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Sluton, and a second by Vice Mayor Claffey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or nay, if opposed. Passes unanimously, Madam Clerk. Item ten, consideration of designation of voting delegates and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference in September. Ms. Swanson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. The League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled this year for September twentieth through the twenty-second. The conference is scheduled to be held in person in Sacramento. And each council member is registered to attend. At this meeting, the league membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish the league policy. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, the city council must designate a voting delegate. In the event that the designated voting delegate is unable to serve, the council can appoint up to two alternates. Um, we have not received information on the issues coming up for vote before the league delegates, but it is appropriate at this time for the council to appoint one council member as the voting delegate and up to two alternates as voting alternate delegates.
Thank you. Uh, any questions by council? This time. Any questions on this item from members of the public? Any questions from anyone watching in Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
And as I recall, I believe all of us are scheduled to attend that annual conference. Um, Ms. Overton, you are typically the delegate, your delegate.
I am, and I'm assuming that, um, August eighteenth is our regional meeting. I'm assuming they're going to be discussing what's going to be uh, the resolutions that they're going to want to oppose or go for, because there was a big, long list at the last meeting. So let's see what the update is on at this meeting, so.
Right. Are you interested in re- remaining as the delegate? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kramer, I believe you were the second designee. I was. I think we talked about either Vice Mayor Claffey or myself being that designee. I. You can, guys can draw straws or arm wrestle. I don't care. Okay. We are. Two all for this. So you're both good. Very good. Bring it back to you for a motion. Anybody?
Know what to prove, actually. Design designated by Councilwoman Overton as the voting delegate with Councilman Kramer as first alternate and. Vice Mayor Claffey as third alternate. Second alternate.
Second alternate. I third. Oh, second.
That was a rough one, but we got through it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor, real quick before you move on, I think we will be needing to cancel the. City council meeting that week. So we'll plan on canceling it. And then if there's some business that needs to be taken up, we'll just have a special meeting.
There is a LAPCO meeting at, at that Wednesday too.
I don't have the authority to cancel that one, but.
I'll be there.
All right. Well, I appreciate your heads up on the calendar there. Mister City Manager, what is the date of that council meeting again?
It's September twenty-first.
Okay, so September twenty-first, this body will not be meeting. The meeting will be canceled. So we may attend the League of Cities Conference. For educational and. Collaborative reasons. All right. Moving on to item I, City Manager and Councilmember reports, Mister Flora.
Uh, just a few quick things. Public Works Department did receive our new excavator last week. So that's exciting to them. And. You can see that renovation has started here at City Hall. There are a few bumps here and there, but pretty much all the demolition work has been complete while they're going up over there. The contractor is expecting to be done in three months. So hopefully that is true. Chief Hobbs had some noisy jackhammering in his office, but he's surviving so far. The chip seal bids for this year's work were expecting to go out yet this week. Tomorrow. Next week, most of the work on the damn road, South Center Drive project has been done, but. The, so the new pavement's been down, but there's going to be a micro surface on damn road extension. That's all happening next week. And then the striping following weekend and that project will be complete before school starts. I guess the only other thing that I really wanted to mention is related to Concte County Water District. So we just got a, a letter this afternoon. They had one of their board members resign and. They have a period of time to appoint a new board member, which they failed to do. And there was a little bit of mix up, but the short story is, is city council's responsibility at this point to appoint a new member, call for special election. And so it has to be done by basically the end of August. So what we're recommending is just get a quick consensus to go ahead and put out an application like we do for other committee appointments. We'll accept those and then the council could review and make an appointment at the next meeting in August. That sounds agreeable to everyone.
And the jurisdictional boundaries need to be within the Concte Water District. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you, Mister Flora.
I guess if there's nothing else, that's my report.
Thank you, Mister Flora. Pardon?
Are we looking for consensus? Are we all shaking our head? Yeah.
Yeah, we have consensus, you got it.
We need to do it, so.
I don't think we have a choice. Ms. Overton? Any important meetings you've attended?
Oh, no, because I was gone for three weeks. So, but as I said, I'm going to be going to the Redwood Empire Division meeting in Fortuna this time. Hopefully if it's hot here, it's cool there. So, and I think we'll get an update on all the. All the resolutions that they'll be putting forth and I'll bring those back to us for consensus on what you guys would like to do with those. Outside of that, I was very impressed with our Lake County Terrace District. I think they're doing a great job. I really do. I was very impressed with that. I'm really glad that we're involved in that and that you guys sit on that and keep it going. So I, I really want to thank their efforts. But they, they do a great job and I see Clear Lake here and there when I go different places. And I think we're getting a really positive, more positive attitude from people now. Because it didn't used to be that years ago. So I see the change in everything. So the marketing is doing, I think, fabulous stuff. So, you know, I just want to. Say that. And I really, I also wanted to just say that we honored our public works and our Conacta Unified School District maintenance people. Thank everybody for coming to that. And it was nice to honor them. They've worked really hard. And so I really thank you guys for stepping up and, and working with them to make that happen for them. So, and it was our honor to serve you guys. So thank you for that too. So.
Very good. Councilmember Kramer?
Uh, yes, a couple of things. I, I'm still going to wish council members loading a happy birthday, even though you jumped the gun on me, Mayor Burdock. As I waited, I didn't do it on Facebook or any of those. I wanted to do it personally.
Well, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Um, moving right along. Of course, out here on, at Austin's Park, you'll see the stage being prepared. Tomorrow night, Saturday night and Sunday night at seven PM. Performances by Shakespeare at the lake. Of the play Measure for Measure. It was played last week at Lakeport. Got some terrific reviews. It's free. There's, there will be refreshments served as well at three different vendors, including Councilwoman. Overton's catering company will be serving liquid refreshments plus tray hose here in town. We'll have hot dishes and. Rock and roll ice cream. We'll be there all three nights. I just found out today. With their ice cream. So we've got them all covered. Like to certainly invite the public to be there. It's a free, free showings. And it's supposed to be an excellent place. I hope to see everybody out there. Then I was going to make an announcement on the chamber mixer, but I'll leave that to you, Mayor Burdock, as you're the acting president.
Where you care.
So, uh, well, all right. On August fifteenth, we, no, no, I'm going to let you do it. You go ahead. I'm done.
Mister Sluton?
I, I don't have a whole lot, except I want to announce that the new chancellor for Woodland College, or excuse me, the Yuba College District. Will be in town on the twenty-third for the reception at the college. I've met the gentleman a couple of times now and hopefully he'll pay as much attention to the Lake County campus as the previous interim chancellor. So it looks positive. I attended a, a board meeting of the Yuba College Foundation yesterday where it showed that we can do a lot better raising money for our local college.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Unfortunately, I was traveling the last couple of weeks here, so nothing to report.
Nothing wrong with traveling with your family and enjoying some new sights, sir. I really don't have anything to report except for the luau at, at the creek has been. Moving forward, I'm really grateful to Clear Lake PD. I want to announce that on October seventh is their canine dinner. We had a bit of a conflict on the date because we were both wanting to do our luau and canine dinner on that. We're discussing that at Chamber now of moving that date. And I'm sure Councilmember Kramer, our chairman for that event, will do well in getting that done and on the, on the docket. So. We put out a save the date. We're going to update that soon. And I just hope everybody can attend both because that's the whole reason why we have a chamber is we want to support. Our local activities and we definitely want to be supportive of our local canine officers and their handlers. And Chief, thanks for the work you're doing there. I appreciate your leadership. Again, want to thank you for a very successful National Night Out. Can I put you on the spot and just kind of explain the history of National Night Out, why it takes place? And that it's an annual event. I think it's pretty regular even on the calendar when law enforcement across the country. Pull together to do this event. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, so we've done it. It's only the second time we've done it. It started decades ago. It's just on the East Coast as an event to get law enforcement agencies out in the community, engaging with people living in their communities. Doing basically barbecues or block parties and, you know, getting out there, meeting the people, talking to them. And it's kind of expanded from that area in the East Coast. And now it's something that's done across the country. The night we did it, most agencies do it on the first Tuesday in August. We did it on Tuesday night. There was about. Or over almost six hundred other jurisdictions that did it at the same time. So it's a, it's a pretty good event. As the mayor talked about earlier, we had a really good turnout this year. We did it two years ago at Highlands Park. And we thought then we had a pretty good turnout, which was good turnout then. But this, this year we had probably at least double the people. Definitely helped to be doing it next to the splash pad that was recently completed. That was a big selling point for people. So no, it was definitely a good event. We had a huge turnout. Like I said, on the food, we, we'd prepared to have about food for three hundred people. And then. We, a little ways into it, we realized that wasn't going to cut it. So we went and got food for another two hundred people. We used about half that. So we used food for about four hundred people. So it was a really nice event. We had a bunch of our officers there just to talk with people. About issues in their neighborhood, issues with law enforcement, anything in general. And it was a really good, really good event for us.
It was. Also want to commend everyone that participated from your department. It was great to see officers playing basketball with some of the kids. Sharing, you know, what they do and seeing the comments on social media. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. Because I was at work, but the, the comments were very positive. You know? I really appreciated those, you know, now my son or daughter wants to be a police officer when she grows up or he grows up. So. A great recruiting tool.
Yes.
Perhaps. Anyway. Always good at that.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to jump in here. I had asked, assumed that when I gave you the floor to announce. Something in the chamber, you were going to do the one that's a little bit more. In the nearer future, our mixer, which will be on August next Tuesday, August, two, two weeks. August fifteenth, that down at Highlands Park, just to get together, have fun barbecue type thing. So.
Come down, enjoy some hot dogs, I believe.
Hot dogs.
And meet your business people.
Hot dog. Okay. And some refresh, water, liquid refreshments as well. And also I was, I did get an opportunity to attend the LA Night Out, National Night Out. And, and you guys, you did a terrific job, all of you. I got to, I got to see Captain Peterson who was bossing his brother.
He's got a promotion. Good job.
Excuse me, Lieutenant. Yeah.
Field promotion.
I don't, I don't know what those things on your shoulders mean. Anyhow, directing his brother cooking the hot dogs. Did a, did a great job of directing and his brother was doing a terrific job helping on the, on the cooking. So again, my congratulations to you too. It was a great event and I think you met. Think a lot of folks see our, our Clear Lake Police Department. As the great unit that it is and the, and the community oriented unit that it is. So congratulations from me as well.
Thank you, sir. All right. That concludes that portion. Any future agenda items, things that we need to address? Very good. Seeing none, I will ask that we adjourn for a five-minute break and then we'll re, reconvene under closed session. Thank you all very much.